I'd like to call the planning commission for the town of McCandless to order. First item on the agenda is a McCandless square master plan amendment. This is a continued review.
Yeah, the person that I would expect to typically be here for this application has not yet arrived. I was not expecting that, so it's all right with you, maybe we can.
All right, we'll go to the second item on the agenda. It's a revised rezoning request for 10185 to 10201 Perry Highway. The applicant has withdrawn C3 rezoning application and recently made a C7 office building district. A vehicle storage lot remains to propose future use.
Hi, guys. Back again. So after talking with and some input from council and commission, we redid it as C7. Most everybody's concerned about somebody building something there, 100% understand that. Parking lot is the most simplest and it is actually with the current C7 guidelines, we'd still have to even parking lot, actually amount of cars we would be able to put there would even be less because of current guidelines. But with a hundred foot setback, you can't really build anything there. It's pretty much impossible. You guys would have to approve something, override or ask somebody that has to have some variance if we did under the C7. And that's not the, the whole idea there with the three units and condition they are, they're not very good shape. The people are not in a financial position to fix them up. They just don't have the money. So being able to sell it and every do have the thing listed for a million bucks, it's not even going to get close to that kind of money. But our best option, and I think if anybody's pulled out on one view, and I'm sure all these folks know, it's very hard to see with the way it's set up, your line of sight would be over a hundred feet. It's much easier to see pulling out. And with the parking lot, a right turn only would allow people to, excuse me, no right turn. We'll be keep our traffic going to Perry Highway. That's the reason why we're looking at the C7. It makes the most sense for everybody involved. And you really, again, with the size of the lot and the current restrictions for building on C7, you couldn't build anything on there. So a lot would be your most practical thing. I think Chairman mentioned put a sidewalk there. I think that's up around the side, that would be a good add and make practical. It would be an improvement to the, the whole area there and make it look better, make it more practical for when and out. And would it be the highest and best use of the property? And yeah, at this point, I mean, any questions? Because we covered some of the stuff last time, but I want to bring it back up again.
Okay. Has anyone from the planning commission actually gone and taken a look at this? I went out and looked at it. Yeah, I went out and looked at it and it's right at the top of the hill and it's relative relatively level. It starts to bend off a little bit. Just does seem to me to be a pretty good use of the property. But I want to see what your comments are. Can anyone start?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think as long as the sufficient buffer zone and know that any kind of visual. You know, that, that would be covered from the.
The guidelines there do have pretty substantial setup for a buffer zone. We have it in a drawing, it's pretty, but I think it actually might have to be a little bit more extensive than that to make it according to your guidelines. For the C7. So it would be, you know, obviously we're not looking to the folks behind E3, we're not looking to do anything to make anything bad for them. If I need an improvement, because the properties are not that good.
Hey, I know, know we talked about the permitted use of the parking lots for what, whether it be 09 or 10. I think what, what you were saying RJ was that it fits under 09, right? But I think the setbacks were farther for, for the 09 as opposed to 10.
Yeah, so the, the use that we're referring to for everyone's benefit is heavy equipment or vehicle parking or storage, which is what would apply for essentially a car dealership overflow lot as is being discussed. That is a conditional use in all districts, including C7. The one stipulation in here that's a conditional use criteria is parking areas shall be located 100 feet from residential districts and streets of flooding such districts. So presumably, and that, that in general, I don't think was in the, yeah, the vehicle offsite parking lot that had a 30 foot setback from residential districts. Now that would apply more if it was like, say, you know, university offsite parking lot, it's just on another parcel, but it's servicing the day to day needs. So that one didn't apply. I'm just kind of eyeballing the concept plan to fit a parking lot on there at all, they're going to have to go to, you know, potentially, I guess, the zoning hearing board. But you know, that would be true of any use, but particularly this one has a pretty strange 100 foot residential setback in addition to anything like that. Yeah.
Yeah, 100 foot setback on the, on us. 1341.09, right? No, no, you got 10.
Correct.
So I was trying to get it as a 10 because that's what the concept plan says.
Right, and I think when the MDM drew it up for us, he was basing it off a 10. Obviously, we're trying to make it what's, what would work the best.
Yeah, I mean, going from a, okay, if it's 10 for offsite parking vehicles. And I sent the language, I sent it to RJ and the other members of the planning commission. I suggested amending the introductory paragraph. And I have an extra copy of this. Let me see. I was hoping that what's, I can't see why we put amendments to allow it in a 10. It would be a lot, a lot, a lot of a setback, setback of 20 feet as opposed to 100 feet. If it's a 09 and I, there's some, some problem with amending that the, the 10 to allow, allow it in the 10.
Great, direct it.
Well, I'm ducking it anyway. Let me give you the language I was proposing.
We wouldn't, is that something you want to tackle? I mean, that's you guys, we're just here.
In response to that question, you know, I mean, it's, it's not something that has been formally pitched to town council since it just kind of came up in that email chain, but you know, ultimately that will be something the council would have to decide whether they want to take up for a zoning ordinance amendment.
Well, yeah, if you don't, if you can't fit in a 10 with that language in it, I don't think it goes in. And the idea is to get the vehicles and the guy, guy, I can't think of his name. I want to see parcels to the north of you into that area. And those are essentially cars, right?
Yes.
And I don't see cars fitting in a 09, it's a heavy vehicle. Take a look at the statute.
And.
Heavy equipment or vehicle parking or storage. Look at A4 says heavy equipment slash vehicles include dump trucks, farm tractors, pile lifts, bulldozers, semi tractors, large machinery and similar equipment in mobile homes. Those are a lot larger than cars. So I really don't see that fitting in the 1341.09.
I, this is, this is a comma quandary, I suppose, because in the, the parking A1, it says parking, display or storage of heavy equipment and vehicles. So I suppose you could say, you know, heavy applies to vehicles and equipment. But, but that said, there's clearly something lacking in the ordinance because there's no subsection that breaks out after the colon at the end of number one. But besides that, the most recent land development application I could find that we had come through here in, for, you know, a similar use of basically dealership overflow lot, I think it was the barrel Honda application, I want to say that was in 2019. And based on the fact that they used buffer yard H for that, I would say that Bruce historically had applied 09 to the car dealership overflow lots regardless of what vehicles were in there. So that would be consistent.
So it's not based on anything in the code.
My interpretation of the code is that heavy equipment and vehicles doesn't specify that they have to be equipment vehicles. It just is and.
Heavy equipment, and I want me to read that heavy equipment, it has heavy vehicles, which seems to be a interpretation that comprised with A4, heavy equipment slash vehicles includes dump trucks. And none of us think I've mentioned even approaching car.
Yeah, again, I mean, I think I would go back to there's been an established practice that this is what we.
Well, we know one thing, you know, we have no one thing and we're not, how can you say that's established practice?
Because the last property that was, well, I should say the last land development application that had this use included, that was the use that was applied by the previous zoning officer.
Well, I heard Paul have passed practice. Okay, anyhow, I just wanted to show you that we, we're interested, I'm interested, at least.
To be clear, we were not, we're not looking to put any type of heavy things, so we're just talking about cars.
Yeah, and that's 09, he's super heavy.
Yeah, it would just be for cars. We're not looking to do anything different.
But the intent is for cars owned by the dealership to sell, it wouldn't be an overflow for service lot, right?
It might be, it might be just for parking for overflow of storage, like storage lot. You know, I know it's semantics, but the fact is, well, you could have cars that are in the showroom, store them on a lot, they would park them there for this part.
Well, I think that's the distinction between 09 and 10 is if it's customer parking or just going to be there temporarily, not be there for weeks and weeks.
You know, we're kind of way ahead of that, so I can't speak for that to the dealer makes decision on what he would actually, he or she would actually park there.
And the property is currently not under agreement.
No.
Well, one of the things I had was parking and then I added first storage to accommodate to guys to allow.
It would make, what you're saying makes sense, but you know, you guys, that's up to you guys, how you do it. I don't, that's not my, my thing.
I don't have any, I have no objection to the proposal. My issues are more broad based, I agree with Paul in here. I don't think that 09, 1341 is drafted out because there's a discrepancy between the slash and subsection A.
I won't argue that.
Identification below where it's four. I, I think that probably has to go to workshop and get that fixed because it's confusing. I also don't like the fact that a parking lot is a use by right in an office building district.
It's conditional.
It's still a use by rights and they satisfy the criteria to use their items.
Yes, I mean presumably, well, I don't, I don't want to make any pronouncements on individual application for us, but I mean, presumably if they could meet the conditions. For that said, there's not 100 feet on all sides of where they want to put the lot. So this isn't going anywhere at the end of the day before, you know, getting some sort of variance.
Yeah, and I'm not making a comment about this particular lot of this application, it's just a broader view. I don't know why in office building district we have a, allow to use for a piece of land as a part, as a principal use. To me, that's something that needs to be worked, but I have no objection to this particular property to propose rezoning for us.
Dan. I have no comments on it.
Yeah, but Dan.
Other day.
Good day to you. Tonight. Unfortunately, my comments are the same as they were last time. And I think this is the wrong forum to be doing what we're trying to do here. The applicant is the realtor, not a developer. He doesn't even know who his developer might be. I think it's pretty clear that the objective here is to convert this property from residential, where it has little value, to commercial where it's perceived to have a greater value. We would be agreeing to the change for a sale to someone we don't know, for a purpose we don't know, all for the benefit of the applicant to make their property more valuable. I don't disagree that everybody has a right to make their property more valuable, but I don't think our zoning activity should be applied for that sort of purpose. And in my humble opinion, that is the sole purpose for this application is that their property will have a greater value so that they can sell it to someone who may do anything with it, we don't even know what. And so unfortunately, I'm in that degree with this whole procedure to get this property resumbed.
I have a question for Dan. So Dan or Kim Zachary, sorry. So am I understanding you when you're saying that you feel like that they should sell the property first? And then the person who buys it should come to us with a concrete plan of exactly what they want to do with it? And then we could rezonate at that point? Is that what you're saying?
I would feel better about that. I know that's difficult. I don't deny that it is difficult, but what we're trying to do here is, is way too speculative in my opinion. And I don't think we're in the business of trying to improve an individual's property value through the rezoning process. Or we don't do the rezoning, but our, our recommendation. I just don't think that's the right forum to do that. I think we should be looking at it in a broader scheme as McCandless. If, if the applicant comes to us with a concrete plan, we should look at it. How does it fit to the overall plan of McCandless? And we should have a say in that. Right now, rezoning, we would have no say in it, we don't know what it's turning to.
I just, just to clarify, the C7, I understand the C3 is what was the initial thing, the C7 was brought up. But it was more to, and I get, I understand 100% what you're saying. It's just, it's like, okay, you just want to make it commercial so you can make a bigger buck out of the property. I get that. But realistically, to be able to sell it, the only people that are genuinely interested and going to do something with it would be a car dealer. That's generally, that's only really money that's even close to being able, I'm the one that's getting calls, okay? It's too far gone, you can't add anything to the current R2. You can't go, I've talked to RJ multiple times about adding on to anything that's there. You can't really do anything. The houses are very old, very dilapidated, they are pretty much a period out, okay? One don't even have connection with the plummings connected, the water's connected one to the other. Ultimately, you're in a, we're in a position here and I know it's not your problem because that's kind of what you said. And I can appreciate that. We're looking at with, with a rezoning at a C7, it pretty much eliminates anything with the size and the regulations you have on a C7 to build anything there. There's nothing that can be built. No building can be built based on your guidelines. You would have to make a variance to do anything to be built there other than a parking lot. Even the parking lot, we'd have to get something additional just to put that there. We're following what I'm saying. That's why it made the highest and best use of the property was in C7 use. It improves it, the look, we all know what it looks like, it looks like blight. I think that was the last person, one of, one of the last comments we had at the last meeting. I get it. And I don't see that going away. But second thing, safety wise pulling out with a hundred foot sideline, it's an improvement for some, a safety thing for somebody to pull out. And it makes it easier. It's almost, again, coming back, it's the highest, best use for McCandless and the neighbors to pull in and out of the property. That was the whole point.
What about this idea? Why don't you make a deal with the car dealer that's contingent on him getting, getting the zoning?
I, we can try, go down that road, most people won't wait because it's such a long process. You know, it's, it's, I'm already in month three on this and we're not, and we've got another three months to go before anything actually happens. Most people are not willing to wait that long. And on, on something that's far contingent. Doesn't like we're looking to build like you're one of these properties with, you got a much bigger thing like McCandless pointing at us, these guys. It's not a multi-million dollar property here, you know? Most of these guys didn't want to wait that long.
Ted, has, has everyone made their comment? Are you still kind of going down the road and asking for comments or where are we on that?
Okay. Yeah, everybody's made their comments. The engineer has no comment on this.
Okay, I, I have a comment, I haven't made my comment.
Well, you can make your comment then.
Thank you, Ted. So I think when the developer says that this is not our problem, I disagree with that. I think it is our problem. When I look down Perry Highway and I see those residence properties where people don't necessarily want to live, not all of them, not all of them, but a large majority of them where people don't want to live. And all you can get in there is a little overnight business. And because they can't make any money on it, because they're just little businesses that come and go, repairs don't get made as often and they start getting blighted. Now, one of the big arguments with that sheets came down there was these are horrible blighted looking properties and anything is better than what's there now. So that was a hard argument because a lot of people who were against the sheets, because those properties were allowed to be so dilapidated, including the property behind it. So it is our property, it is our problem as a town when we don't want to have properties become blighted, right? Because that's a blemish on the town and it also depreciates not only the properties that are blighted, but the properties around those places. The next thing that the, that the people behind there are going to start complaining about is when nobody lives in there, oh, they're a vermin. Oh, the gutters are falling down. Oh, this is, and then these people are going to be asked to put money into a property that they can't get any money out of. And then we get into citations and that I, we're doing it all over the town. I'm telling you, this is how this goes. Now, I understand everybody's reservation and I have the same reservations because I want the people around there to be as protected as possible. But I'm concerned about doing nothing with this property because that's what will happen. Nothing will happen, you know, with this property. And I'm concerned about it becoming blighted. And I, I look at the uses that I have my zoning book open that C7 can be there. They seem like they're pretty soft uses. You know, I, I have to tell you, it, it looks like it's a, it's a, of all the choices, it's looking like a strong choice in my mind for those reasons. That's my comment.
Thank you. I think also from a town policy point of view, I'm not on, I'm not on council, that's just my own opinion. That we should try to get rid of some of these houses that open up onto a four lane highway at the top of a hill. I mean, it's just, it seems like a recipe for disaster.
Agree, agree.
So, and I think that this is a reasonable use for this property.
I agree.
All right. Do we have any comments from the public? You can come up here and.
Do we step aside?
Yeah.
Sure.
My name's Jack Casey, I live at 10030 Timbar Court in Wexford, and that's in the Oak Ridge plant. With all due respect to this gentleman, he said it was best for everyone, but did he talk to the neighbors? I zoomed in on your last conference on this and he was told, talk to the neighbors, put in and talk to the neighbors. I'd like to show you some pictures of the good native that might be interested in buying this property. This is a bunch of sardines parked on total asphalt. Everybody's so concerned about the poor people at the bottom of Oak Ridge and the flooding they get, that they want to put another parking lot at the top of the hill. But here's a picture of the parking lot you have on Arcadia Drive. Okay, it's 100% impervious to water. Where's that water going to go? Zachary says this is the best idea for this plan. Well, you know what? Has anybody thought about maybe using it for residential property? Has anybody thought about maybe putting a duplex in there? You know, there's other things you can do rather than make this a commercial property and affect the poor neighbors that when they bought their property and they made their lifetime investment, they're expected to counsel to have their back. They didn't expect people to come in and rezonate a bunch of stuff around them so they could look at lights 24 hours a day. And they could hear people walking up, trying to find a car, hitting a button, panic button on cars and cars beep them all day, all night. So I, I think you guys should sit back and realize that there are other uses for this property. Maybe the town can buy it and turn it into a park. And they could use the sidewalk, which we got $406,000 to build a sidewalk that some council people have decided they want to use on their own personal projects. However, I have a copy of the grant thanks to the Freedom of Information Act. And I also have a copy of the contract and it says they're responsible for using the money on the sidewalks to connect Longview right up to the Firestone Station. And if they don't use it for that, the town is required to repay the money with interest. They are not entitled to use the money for something else. So this poor gentleman doesn't need to spend money, pull him back to the other side and put him in the line of sight that we've been asking for for 30 years. So with all due respect, I think this gentleman should go back and figure out another use of this property, but put it in the concept of residential. I don't think there'd be a big objection making it from an R2 to an R3, but we certainly don't want more cars going through our neighborhood. The first thing that that dealer is going to do is with your, with your thought about backing onto the highway, well, they don't back on the highway from there. There's a garage there and there's an entrance on the Longview. And the first thing that's going to happen is that dealer is going to realize he can drive cars out on the Longview all day long and take people for test drives. And his mechanics can come out that way and take things for test drives. So we're right back to the issues that we had with the Marwah property. People driving through Oak Ridge fast, they go through there fast now. And we like to go for walks with our kids and our dogs to our neighborhood and we want it to be safe. And with all due respect, this guy thinks he's been killing it for three weeks or three months. Well, Mr. Marwah's been trying to develop his property for 15 years. So with all due respect, we would like you to reconsider any option that has anything to do with, with making this anything other than residential. Thank you for your time.
I have a question. This thing was going to be a left turn room coming out.
Have you seen the left turn only down at Lowe's and the one at McIntyre Square? I always see people going the other way anyhow, because the police don't enforce it. So they'll be, they'll be coming out and making the turn anyhow. For Pete's sake, they turn around and, and the driveway's up on Longview all the time. They come up across the road and turn around, it's just going to make more traffic up there. And you should go up on a Friday night, I'd, I'd like y'all to go up on a Friday night and see what happens on that road. It's crazy.
Because after football game?
Right before the football game, yeah. They park all over there, I mean, it's, it's a nightmare. And these people, they, they spent their life savings to have a nice house. And all of a sudden, you want to. And all of a sudden want to put in an asphalt parking lot? And think about the people who have wells. Those, all those houses, those four houses. They use, I think all of, maybe one of them is water, but I believe all of them, at least three of them are water. And the people at the bottom of the hill, they use a well too. So, uh, you know, will affect the water table whenever there's no bushes and grass to absorb the water. So, all these things need to be taken into serious consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Ibrahim. I'll spell that out. I B R A H I M. Last name Y U C E L. I live at thirty-seven Longview Avenue. So. Our lot is part of the original Mary subdivision of nineteen ninety-five. As shown here, which subdivided my lot from the three subject lots that he's familiar with. So, the survey that he conducted a couple of months ago. Which shows his three lots and this is ours right here. We have a, we have a, we have a house here, we have a garden. Uh, there's a four pound we live in there. So, my family bought this property as a vacant lot in two, two thousand and three. And my dad, mom and dad built a house themselves as their own contractors on it when I was in third grade. So, the property has very high sentimental value to me. Now, that having been said, I'm against this rezoning proposal. Uh, first, I listened to the September seventh planning commission video on YouTube. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but I would have loved to, I would have loved to. I was ready to speak on September twenty-seven, but that got canceled. It would have been great for the rezoning proposal applicant to at least reach out to neighbors and try to get their buy-in. Especially the one neighbor that borders all three of the parcels in question. But Mr. Fitzgerald did not contact us. From the planning commission video at timestamp fifty-eight twenty-one, one of the members, Rob, I think, says. It would be very beneficial to see something in writing indicating that they're willing to consider this as their new neighbor. Here's signatures from four people that live at thirty-seven Longview Avenue that unanimously reject this proposal. Now, on the right type of zoning conditional use. Uh, the concept plan that was shown is for the most part meaningless for the reasons that we already outlined. Whether it's rezoned to C seven or C three is inconsequential. Because the real question is whether this should be rezoned at all from resident, residential to commercial. And that raises some serious concerns. As noted at timestamp forty-one twenty-five in the last planning commission. Quote, if this is rezoned, we don't have to put this plan in there. End quote. However, as we've all understood, the parcel is too small. It's not wide enough. Even if the developer goes through with the consolidation, when the mechanic set back requirements means you can't put any sort of substantive commercial building in there. Whether it's C three or C seven. Furthermore, even if the concept plan meant something. Uh, they didn't use the Craig zoning code for it. And we just talked about this a few minutes ago. The intention here is to sell it to a car dealership to be used as a parking lot. If the car dealership is able to park and store their first sale vehicles on there. Uh, then it meets the zoning requirements for section fourteen-ten, not fourteen oh nine in my opinion. This is straight from, um, the canvas of, um. Zoning permits. Uh, which states for section thirteen forty-one-ten, parking display for storage of heavy equipment and vehicles. As an accessory or principal use and which are not in daily use. But here's a requirement in section B two. Parking areas shall be located one hundred feet from residential districts and streets abutting such districts. My house is the closest residential, the residential house to that area. And Longview Avenue is a street that abuts a residential district. So, this is a hundred fifty feet wide by about two hundred twenty or maybe a little bit more than that tall. How exactly is this going to work when you need a one hundred foot backyard setback for my property land? How exactly is this going to work if they're required to have a buffer yard E? And they side setback of a hundred feet. And how exactly is it going to be functional for Schultz or another dealership if they're required to use it for so-called client parking? As required by thirteen forty-one-ten. What really changes if this is moved from a C three to a C seven? Does this concept plan even meet the requirements of the vehicle parking and storage code? These one hundred foot setbacks were wisely written into the law for a reason. So that commercial activity is not an unreasonable nuisance to residential neighbors like me. This law is meant to protect me, not be trampled over just because I want to turn into a parking lot. Now, on the good faith issue, uh, the most revealing part of the planning commission moving last month. Occurred around timestamp one oh two, where one of the planning committee members says, and I quote. Right now, we're rezoning it so it makes itself easier to sell at a higher price point than any of those three homes are valued at. It's currently on the market for a million dollars. None of those homes are worth three hundred thirty thousand a piece. Mr. Fitzgerald replies, we are correct, sir, one hundred percent. It was based on being able to sell it to a Schultz or a dealership. That was the whole point of it. Again, I asked the planning commission, is this really in the best interest of the town and the canvas and its residents? And specifically the residents of Longview Avenue. Now, again, I have no problem with Mr. Fitzgerald. He's doing his job. He's doing the thing he was asked to do. And my family lives at Longview Avenue, right next to this lot, and it's certainly not in our best interest. This rezoning works against me and my family and harms us. Yes, it may be in Mr. Fitzgerald's best interest to do this because he's a real estate agent. And of course, he's going to try to make this small lot easier to sell. But what is the public benefit of this? Now, another point, I already share a northern border with Schultz. You can see that in the plan here. That is Schultz up there. And I'll pass you on these pictures that I took today. I took these pictures today at four thirty and it shows you what kind of buffer yard or lack thereof exists between my northern property border and Schultz. And this is exactly. See, there's three hundred tires piled back right behind my fence. Okay, this is exactly what I expect Schultz to do if this plan goes through. This is a drill picture I took today. See those tires? I counted three hundred before I stopped counting. Is this what McCandless considers a buffer yard? Okay, so, take this seriously. Ride by my street again. Just a quick note, we had a bunch of mosquitoes back in July and August. I was wondering where they're from. It's all from the water that piles up in those tires. Maybe you should put that into the record as well. I don't expect anything better from Schultz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just for the good of the order, in case anyone is tuning in at home, uh, and you are an adjacent property owner. With the C three application, you all received the letter, um, probably a couple of weeks in advance of the town council meeting. Uh, the, for the public hearing for the C three application. The C seven application is not scheduled until the second meeting of November, November twenty-second, I believe. Um, so if you are an adjacent property owner and you have not received the letter giving you the date of that hearing for the C seven rezoning. You will get that closer to the meeting time. Just wanted to let everybody know in case you're wondering the difference.
Excuse me, RJ? Would, would you please fill out an official complaint for the gentleman whose name that I'm sorry I was, did not write down fast enough? Um, and make sure that our zoning officer is out there bright and early to mornit, tomorrow morning and see about those tires which should not be there.
I will have, I will have to look into that. Um. Don't want to get too, too into the weeds of zoning code here, but a vehicle storage parking lot that is a primary use of a lot. Is treated differently than somebody's parking lot, um, attached to an overall commercial building. I know that's very semantic. Happy to talk about it another time. Um, but we'll certainly take a look and see if there is, you know, an issue with, with the tires accumulating there.
I think going out there and taking a look at that is an excellent idea.
Do anyone else who'd like to speak? Please identify yourself and where you live.
My name is Jeff Jezzerk. I live at one oh nine O Quitch Drive. I'm a neighbor of Jack's. I know Ibrahim's property.
I'm so sorry. Can you just give me the numbers of your address real quick again?
One zero zero nine zero O Quitch Drive. Thank you. Um. I'm not anti-development and I appreciate the work council is doing. But, I do respect Ibrahim and his family's strong concerns. About a commercial property that is that close. Did approach Mr. Pringle who lived in the middle of the three properties. Over ten years ago when our neighbors were trying to work with Penn Dot. And Senator Turzai's Congressman Turzai's. Office to get sidewalks thrown in Bruce Betty and zoning. And, um, Mr. Pringle was none too happy about sidewalks. He told me he took down. Over twenty trees. And the township didn't thank him for that. It, it was an odd conversation and he also grasped about. Losing a lot of property to road expansions over the years. I don't know when he purchased the property and how early it was. Um, so he wasn't very keen. On anything that would increase his taxes or improvements or anything. He was kind of. Anti-development from this point of view, but now that they're selling. It's a whole different ballack. So, I would say. Um, I do hope council does come and look at the properties and, and talk to Ibrahim and his family. Um, but I do thank you for all your work. That's all I have to say.
Good, thank you. Anyone else?
Um, is there anyone logged into the Zoom that wanted to make a public comment? If so, please type in the chat your name and address now. Um, you cannot unmute yourself, but when you make a public comment, we will send you a microphone request. Um, I'm just give it a minute. And was there anyone else here that wanted to speak? Okay. I'm not getting anything yet.
There anything we'll wait for that to. Internally. See what can and can't be done from a commercial perspective, whether it's. Authorized uses in C seven, C three or something else. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to someone developing the property. I'm not opposed to rezoning for someone to make money. Because that's generally what rezoning is for. This is just really a. A commercial is not out of character to the area either. It winds up that there are. Poorly placed properties on a busy commercial strip next to a car dealer and also letting small residential lots. Obviously. There seem to be issues associated with the existing. Tires and I'll agree, it doesn't appear to be much of a problem. Is, is there anything we can look at? And again, like I said, I don't like the fact that the zoning allows it to be a park. Uh, I would prefer it to be a, but is there anything we can look at? To figure out what can or can't be done. I'm not a fan of attempting to find the property.
Yeah, yeah.
If the house is a ram shack with poor condition, presumably. If they were going to be for residential use or there's much interest in residential use, I would have been expressed. Uh, so I'm, I'm with him on that. It's, it's kind of a catch for me too. If it stays like it is, you've got a couple of abandoned properties. If, if you don't. What do you do? Anything we can do in terms of just to figure out. What can or can't be done with this lot from a commercial perspective and what can be done? What, what is a buffer yard actually look like?
Yeah, so the, I'll, I'll go into more detail because I mean, these are all good questions. The shorthand answer for all of those is it depends. Um, but, I mean, ultimately, something internally, you know, whether it's a financial. Outlay, you know, looking at buying the property, that's something that's a town council budgetary decision. So, I don't even want to try to, you know, speak to that. Um, but for, sorry, one second. Mister, uh, Peter Long, I'm not sure if it's Longini is how you pronounce it. I'm not sure if you're looking to make a public comment. If you are, please type in the chat box. Otherwise, we just keep people's cameras off if they are not presenting at the moment for the curtain purposes. Um, okay, returning to your question. Um, the setback, so currently the way that our zoning code is written, the setbacks for each. District are done compared to what they have bought, rather than by whatever use is present on the lot regardless of the district. Not a thing that I've seen done often, but that's the way that we did it. So. It is what it is. Um, for the C seven district, the residential buffer, the rule to the residential setbacks, that's different from buffer yards. The residential setback is still a hundred feet. So essentially, and, and that's the same for C three as well. So essentially the actual setback requirements, there's no difference. Anybody that wants to do anything on that lot commercially is going to have to go through a variance. Um.
RJ, I think just to clarify one thing these guys were saying about putting duplexes there and I.
Oh, yeah, I was, I was getting to that.
So, the issue with duplexes is we still have to get a variance, no matter if we keep an R two. It has to be consolidated. I don't even do it because the sideline. Uh, if we hit some type of duplex, that, that was our first thought. But once we're talking to you, it didn't sound like that we were, we didn't have the room to do that in any which way. And we have to do consolidation and we're kind of back to square one with the whole thing.
So.
That was one of our concerns. That's why we went this way.
So, what Mr. Fitzgerald was speaking about, you know, originally when he inquired about how to put a rezoning application in in the first place. Duplexes was something that was inquired about. They are in R two as a conditional use. Um, some of the conditions of use, I believe, are that they need to be in a transitional area. Which, you know, perhaps could be argued that commercial versus R two is a transitional area. I'm not here to make an argument for any potential applicants. Um, they also need to make sure that they don't infringe upon privacy and enjoyment of adjacent single family homes. Interesting condition that we put in there. Um, but point being, you still need lot frontage such that, um, it would have, I think they maybe could do one duplex if they consolidated them. Um, I would have to take a look at the square footage of the lots that would be created because they might not. Without a variance, be able to meet the minimum lot area. Um, the consideration of duplexes in our code certainly allowed for a lot of room. Even compared to our single family zoning regulations, which are pretty generous. So. You know, whether it's more or less difficult to do commercial versus residential, again, I'm not really here to express opinions on behalf of applicants, but. Um. A variance would be involved for most things. It wouldn't just be a building permit for a rebuild of a single family home, those lots.
What's the frequency that rezoning, whether it's commercial, commercial, residential to residential or vice versa? Is done when doing anything would require that there. It's almost like a wild.
Yeah, I, I mean, like statistically speaking, I have no idea. We, we've had one rezoning application other than this since I didn't.
If you want to just pave it. You need a variance.
Not necessarily. Um, so. That depends. If somebody just wants to pave it as not an actual primary use, like if somebody wants to throw down. Um, a parking pad for the houses that are there. That's something that's handled administratively depending on, you know, the square footage. Um, of the impervious surface being created. There might be some stormwater management controls that would be required. Uh, particularly the way that our code treats these offsite, you know, vehicle overflow or customer parking lots or whatever. The conditional use criteria where they impose the additional setback. So, and I mean. We have to look at every application as it comes in and the particulars of that, but typically a parking lot when it's attached to just a structure. You know, a, a building, um, that hopes the primary use of a lot. The parking lot is not considered in the setback. You can generally pave up to whatever your required buffer yard is. Whatever's going on with the dealership in the back, you know, I don't know exactly when it was constructed. I just have enough information to compare that to today's current code. Um. Without seeing exactly what somebody wanted to do, it's hard to say that you always need a variance, but our, our setbacks are pretty intense.
One, one quick note, um, there have been a number of properties. I don't know if they were rezoned first, but developed as parking lots. One is down at the community college. And then one just south of that. There's another one. Uh, I think, I think two of the dealerships up there have developed property behind them. But, um, they were individual pieces of property and they developed as parking lots. And then there's one that's just, just happened recently. I'm not sure how, but, uh. Pretty much behind where she's used to be. Pretty much behind where she used to be. There's a low area that's been developed as parking. So it's, it's not, it's not. Not something that's going to happen before. The one for the community college used to be a, a big hole in the world. I mean, it was really a deep hole. It was filled over in all the years. My concern more than anything else about this property is I don't like. People exiting out onto Route nineteen, the residential piece of the property anymore. It's just getting to be too dangerous, particularly where this is right at the top of the hill. And it's going to be even more dangerous as you go down the hill with other properties as you go further down that hill. It's, uh. I, I think for us to, to entertain rezoning this for a, a, a C three, R three project. Which would be talent, well. Townhouses or anything like that, I think would be irresponsible.
I guess so, so just for clarification, you know, we talk about modifications requesting variances or setbacks. For, for, for the park, for the parking lot, but the parking lot itself, because it's a parking lot really not tied to a structure. It's not subject to the setback requirements.
It is in this case when it's a primary use of the lot according to the way they're.
So if it's, it's supposed to be a primary use, it will be.
They would need.
Okay, so they won't be able to, to pave the entire parcel.
No, no, because they would still need the buffer yards. Buffer yards are different from setbacks. Usually they're not as steep. But I mean, that's, that's typically where you have to own the pavement for common use in their parking property.
RJ, all this information is on the, in the supporting documents for this meeting, isn't it, online? That shows all the buffer guards and all the trees and the grass, isn't that on the supporting documents online?
Well, our, our zoning code is all online.
Not the zoning code, the proposed, the proposed plan that we have, is that in the supporting documents for this meeting?
That's in the supporting documents. The concept plan has not been reviewed for zoning compliance. So whatever is on there, I can't guarantee it's.
But, but you, but you can look on that and you could get an idea, sir, of what they are proposing. And it's kind of hard to explain. You can kind of see it and appreciate it a little bit more if you just look at those documents.
I assume we're going to make a motion.
Yes, I don't have anyone online signed up for public.
Or there's something else? Yes. So once it's rezoned, is there anything that. Deters them from having flow through onto Landview? Because I think that's what Jack was initially addressing, and I think that is very problematic. If it is a car dealership with a lot of vehicles. And I think just like the Marwah property had concerns. That weren't addressed upfront, and that was one of the reasons that it was sort of sent back. If something like that were to happen where suddenly this string of three small houses becomes almost a parking lot, but really a driveway. Between a dealership and Landview. That's not, that's even a worse outcome than having cars parked. And I think again, Ibrahim's. Property concerns are very, very unjustified. We all know people use that as a U-turn. They come up and they turn on Landview and they go back down and having an active driveway where instead of. Three people who take their car out once a day if that, it's really going to be problematic. So I would hope that would be. Addressed somehow.
Well, I agree with you and they actually have to come back in with a, a site plan review. I mean, this is just.
And so, again.
We can eliminate that, that access onto.
Okay, thank you for hearing me out. Anybody else? All right.
There is, let's make, is there one, someone wanting to make a motion to recommend town council approve the. Very highway rezoning application to change the zoning district, district to C seven from R two.
No, R two to C seven.
Yes, district two C seven from R two. Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Can we, let's do a roll call for this. We did last time. Brendan, were you the one that made the first?
Yeah, he was, he made the motion.
Okay, uh, let's see. Rob is not here. Mister Hall. Mister Gordon. Mister O'Donnell. Mister Wacaskis. And Mister Minor. Well, in that case, it looks like it is three two. So ultimately, the planning commission's recommendation is that council should approve.
Okay, we got that.
RJ, it was the recommendation because I couldn't hear two of those votes. What was the recommendation again? Please speak more clearly.
Three to two in favor.
In favor of zone rezoning from R two to C seven.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I, I wasn't able to hear all that. Thank you so much.
And just as a reminder, the public hearing for this application is scheduled at town council at November twenty second. If you wouldn't mind just emailing me those photos so we can take a look. He's the, yeah, he's the code enforcement officer. Yeah.
All right, the third item on your agenda for now is a McCandless Point mixed juice retail. Ninety-one oh one Perry Highway, continued review. Just identify yourself, please.
First off, good evening, members of planning commission. My name is Michael Lund. I'm director of engineering with Sheastland Associates. We're the site's civil engineer for the project. With me this evening via Zoom is Bruce Pollak and Jesse Katrensek. With RSC Architecture. Also with us presently is Anthony Caswell with Dylan McCandless King, Colonel Graham. And the owner, Senator Sefranco. Presented back in September. We're here again in October. Just wanted to give an update with the progress that has been made on the project since then. We've received comments from gateway engineers and we've addressed the technical comments regarding stormwater management. And the land development comments. There are a few administrative comments remaining. But those are items like operation and maintenance agreements with stormwater management. And easement agreements that will need to be developed if, if, when this project gets approved. Landscaping, we've worked with RJ to develop a landscape plan that we feel meets the. Meets the different buffer yards on the site. Basically, with the. Non-conform, non-conform in nature of the property and limiting setback space, we do have to kind of think that, that we think that has worked. And that's why we are requesting a modification request to allow that landscaping plan. We see, we, we submitted the PennDOT Highway occupancy permit prior to our last meeting. We've received comments. From PennDOT and we are currently addressing those comments and working with PennDOT to get everything resolved and that, that. We are communicating with the MTSA regarding anticipated sanitary floors. Our initial calculations show that there will be less sanitary floor coming from the site. Than what was there whenever it was restaurant approved issues. We're optimistic that we should be able to get a exemption to sanitary planning module for that reason. Working with Buckeye Partners to get approval to do work within the right away of the site. As you know, they have a, they have a gas main on the site, so we're working with them to do with all their regulations right now. Like, like I said, to do work on the site. And since the last meeting, that you, one of, one of the discussion points was sidewalks. So we took a look at the side of one depth and we agreed to install four, over four hundred fifty feet of sidewalk areas. Along Perry Highway, Mohican and Perry Vista. When we were looking at the site. Up on Perry Vista. We went, we looked in an area that was close to the western, northwestern side of the property. And we found that the existing topography made it very difficult to construct a sidewalk that would be along Perry Vista. Basically, the, from the back of the code, the site goes down really steeply. To the existing parking lot area and to install a five foot sidewalk in that area would, it would be very difficult to do that. Also, due to the slope of Perry Vista, which is I believe over eight percent. That would also limit us on developing a, a, a proposed sidewalk there. So basically what we've done is we've covered everywhere, we've installed a sidewalk where we believe one can be installed. And that would be all the impervious area that is currently there. So from the property line along Mohican, all the way along Perry Highway. Up to the top of Perry Vista, we're installing a side. What we've done is we requested a partial later. Request, or partial modification request. I'm sorry, modification request for a partial later for the sidewalk along Perry Vista. So as you can see, I don't know, RJ, if you can zoom into that area at all or.
What part are you looking at?
Where we, where we, where we're showing that it's, the topography would prohibit us from installing a sidewalk right up there. If I can see the existing contours, trying to fit a five foot sidewalk in there would be extremely difficult. And I went out there a couple of weeks ago, took some pictures and RJ, if you could, if you could put those pictures that I sent you today.
Guessing these are the ones labeled one, two, and three, right?
I believe so, yes.
I just have to swap out all of the screen shares.
This is from near the intersection of Perry Vista and Perry Highway. The sidewalk, as you can see, it would be difficult for the sidewalk in up near the upper portion of the road, just because of the steep slope. The topography of the site going down to the existing parking lot. Via the next picture. You can see this from another view. This is from, from in, inside the existing parking lot. And the third picture, you can see the slope, what I mentioned was over eight percent going up on Perry Vista. Especially with the, the tilting of the car. So what we would propose to do is if you see, so I can get back to.
Sorry, you want number three?
Yeah, number three. When I say we would put sidewalk up, up to where there is an existing pavement. If you see right behind the car, there's the white post and the edge of pavement right there. That's where we'd be, we would be able to install sidewalk up to that point. So we feel that would, that would provide access to, for existing sidewalk further down Perry Highway. And it should be adequate for install handicap ramps along those lines too.
Is that it?
Yes.
Comments, gone?
So just for clarification of sidewalks, the entire length of nineteen.
Correct.
Greg.
The sidewalk issue on Perry Vista, if you say it is slow, are you referencing the slope of the road? Or the slope of that grassy area that we took out between the existing parking lot?
Okay, I'm glad you asked. Actually both. I should, should clarify that. Both of those will limit the installation of a sidewalk. Like I said, the steepness of Perry Vista. But then going down to the existing parking lot, that slope there, because we're actually cutting into. It a little bit right now, which will make, try to put a five foot sidewalk there. That would be at the same elevation as the road. We believe we will not be able to do that.
Your particular requirement for a five foot sidewalk versus another one.
That is where a code requires.
Is the only way you could do that would be to create some sort of a retaining wall. At the edge of the parking lot. And then have still. Level over to the road. Is that the way it would be constructed if possible?
Well, if possible, what, what may happen is if there's a wall constructed there, then there would have to be railings. There have to be safety measures so pedestrians don't fall over the wall.
And they, assuming for the moment that you would build such a wall. And what would the depth or the height rather of that wall be?
It would be pretty substantial. I'm looking at the, I believe it would be. Eight feet above ground, not counting the area that would be needed below ground. And that would have to be reinforced, depending on what type of wall. If it's a typical segmental retaining wall, like a brick type, it would probably have to be reinforced and. That's, that's quite a cost for, to bear for that.
So the difference between the roadway and the parking lot is roughly eight feet? Is that what I heard you say?
Probably existing, I would probably say that it is six feet. Our site plans, we're doing a little more cut in that area to balance off the site, so that would make it eight feet above the ground surface.
So you're, you're creating a lower parking lot surface than currently exists.
Yes, but it's a little further away, so.
And the length of such a retaining wall would be approximately what?
Where we have, the area there is, I apologize. The area that the sidewalk would not be installed would be sixty feet along Perry Vista. And like I mentioned, we are, we are, we were planning to install over four hundred fifty feet of sidewalk along Mohican. Perry Highway and Perry Vista.
Looking at the same thing you've got up there on the screen. It's the, it's the, where the gray stops. Am I correct in looking at that?
That is correct, and that is where the.
And then it would be further to the left west is what you plan not to do.
That is correct. If you can see the contours there, everything pretty much slopes down straight from back of the curb.
So we're talking about sixty feet of an eight foot wall.
Yeah, that, that is.
I mean, just from a legal standpoint, it's not, it's not that we don't want to build it. It's, that's not feasible as well. Because if you try to build a retain more just to our property line, we're going to be establishing a cliff on the neighboring property line. That is not going to service anybody. In fact, in order to stabilize that, we'd likely need to build another retaining wall. On the neighboring property line to just create a T intersection there to support sixty feet of sidewalk. So it's, it's really not that we don't want to do it. I mean, we wouldn't be having this fight if we could do it. I mean, it's for sixty feet of sidewalk. It's not saving us a lot of money. It's just that it's really, it's just not feasible.
The problem is, it, it looked like the rest of Perry Vista gets more level as you go up, doesn't it?
Are you talking about past that point?
Yeah.
Well, there's a driveway there located for the townhomes.
Can we have that, the picture put back up, please?
See what I mean, Kim?
Yeah, it I don't understand the T and dropping off thing. It looks like the whole thing is gradually graded. And that it would just go up and then meet that driveway from just this picture. That's my memory of it. Also, that I don't recall any cliffs being on Perry Vista.
Yeah. Yeah, if you if you go, RJ, if you can go back to the plan, you can see where our property line is.
What continues to increase in slope as you get to the intersection there, excuse me, I don't know the name of that road, but you can see it's starting to form there. And it continues to go uphill or crest at the top of that intersection, the driveway through townhouse. So you're looking at a continual slope past our property line.
Where's the property line in that image that we just saw?
Currently, it's at the parking lot.
Yeah.
Currently, the parking lot has.
I don't remember where the curve is. Right curve ends, it's right on the edge of the.
Oh, so what they're saying is that they're pulling back this section, so it no longer will be paved. And so the edge of this parking lot here is further back than the current condition.
And RJ, looking at that grading, does it look like Perry Vista that that slope is just kind of goes from the sidewalk straight into the rest of the hill?
Um, according to the contour lines on here, this is about where it would level out.
Okay, all right. So but if the sidewalk went to the edge of their property. Would it would just stop there? Would there be a big drop off?
Uh, I I'm I'm not an engineer, so maybe engineer, what do you think?
Well, Mike. You've looked at this, and are you saying that you're going to need an eight foot wall for sixty feet? Is that what we were talking about?
Roughly taken, if you count the contours there, that's roughly.
Because if you if you follow out, I mean, I'm only counting three, there's twelve oh three. And at the far end, it goes up to twelve eleven. That's eight feet. But the road slopes down at the same time, right? You're sloping, you're sloping up to that to that point.
Yes.
So it's going to be on me on average. Five, six feet?
Okay, I'm not taking them up with that.
Okay.
It's also the flatness of the sidewalk connecting to the road.
Okay, but but it but it is, it is. It 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 is feasible to construct with the installation of a wall.
It could be, yes.
Yes, okay, I I I'm saying that, I mean, it is, I'm just telling the planning commission, it is feasible to construct. And I think that's what your point you were getting to, Dan.
Yes, I I think, yeah, we.
So if it's a five foot wall for sixty feet, that's that's three hundred square feet of wall. It's going to cost about fifteen thousand dollars, just roughly fifty dollars a square foot face to build the wall.
Would you need a wall on the opposing, on the neighboring property to help stabilize that area? That's the question. If that is the case, we cannot do that. And therefore, we should not have to build a wall if it can't be stabilized. So our point is, because the slope continues up past our property line, in order to stabilize our wall, you're likely going to need. A wall on the neighboring property.
I I I think we could work. I think that could be tapered back. I mean, there's a way to do it.
I mean, you you you've pulled your your parking lot back, so there is property between your parking lot and the neighboring property. It doesn't seem like you would have to.
I'll defer to the engineer, but our original discussion was that it's not possible just because you're going to need access.
The sidewalk's going to be constructed in the right away at Perry Vista. The wall would be on your property line. Or or close to it. I mean, right now, the plan shows grading in the town right away. So technically, you need a, you know, you need a wall for that too. Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, you know, so you shouldn't be grading in our right away unless there's a reason for it. So again, it's it, I I don't see that it's not feasible to construct. Just my opinion.
Sidewalk size, you call through Wexford, the Dallas, Grand Bay, and Flat. Rarely do you see a slope stuff. This has an eight foot, ten foot drop. If you're walking down, we don't want a rain slippery day. It doesn't make sense.
Please, please speak into the microphone. Please speak into the microphone.
Just come up.
Yeah. So if you take the sidewalks in Wexford, Cranberry, most of them are flat. They're level sidewalk. You don't see slope sidewalks. Yeah, because wheelchairs and grades and so forth. So if you take the sidewalk right away, then the slope is now eight or ten feet. You're coming down in a rain icy day or whatever, because you're not on the road. If you're on the road, McCale's trucks are salting and everything. So now you have a sidewalk, potentially hazard, slides right down into nineteen. I just see, I see level sidewalks. I understand.
You're describing is is also at intention. On the, what would that be? The west side of McKnight Road? They they built a sidewalk up there that goes up the hill till it gets to the level. It was mostly, and it was mostly put in there because most of the workers come in on a bus. And they get off, they get on the sidewalk, and they can walk up rather than walking up on the street.
Um, I I I'd also like to remind everyone that we just had Mr. Poe put in a substantial sidewalk with considerable slope. I'm not sure if it was more than seven percent and build quite a retaining wall to put a sidewalk down Thompson Run.
Yeah, I I just don't see this as being that difficult.
How far?
Good.
If there's sixty feet that I'm looking at between the edge of the proposed sidewalk in the back property. If I were to accept for the sake of argument that if we take it all the way to the back property line in Perry Vista. It would require this T retaining wall that would involve stabilizing the adjacent property. How far could we take the sidewalk in that same direction without having to do that? Something one more foot of sidewalk would require supporting the adjacent property. So how many feet can we add without having to do that?
Without having to do.
Do you, sir, or do you have an engineer employed? I I would recommend that you speak to him about that. I think that would be a good project for him to figure that out. And then you can come back to us and propose what he came up with.
The the comment was Brandon, that that was the question to the applicant's engineer.
Okay, now you're saying how far back, and I apologize. I just want to make sure we're talking the same thing. Can you restate that?
Sure, no, I can't do directions because you're probably looking. Three, and the sidewalk stops on, proposed sidewalk stops on Perry Vista. And you go west, upgrading Perry Vista to the adjacent property where there's the town. How far can we go west? With without having to stabilize the adjacent property in that, we'll call it a T style retaining wall, for lack of a better word. Where you might have to support the Perry Vista side.
Yeah.
And the adjacent property side.
I would have to look at that in more detail. I would probably.
Because if sixty is not practically, you get fifty five, it's better than nothing.
It's.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Mike, it's terrible. I'm drawing. It it's terrible, even if you make it up to elevation, you know, roughly elevation twelve. Which is there, these are only one full contours on here too. These aren't true floors, so it's not as steep as it. As it is a rock, so I I think you could get up there. You'd have to have a retaining wall that would stop at the, I mean, you. It's all in town right away. The wall would be in town right away too. You put the wall, you build the wall as close to the sidewalk as you can to minimize the the height of the wall. So a- a- again, it's all, like I said, it's all doable.
If I may, but can I ask you again, what was the number that you quoted? How much fifteen thousand dollars?
That's just a rough, rough idea on what a wall would cost.
So for fifty, for sixty feet of sidewalk that would never be connected to, because let's be honest, it can be impossible. You guys can't build a sidewalk through Perry Vista. Because we're going to have to get eminent domain on all these properties. I've dealt with this, and I need to value myself as solicitor. We're in the process of it right now. It's a really pain when you have to tell people, please sign over. An easement so we can construct a sidewalk that you have to maintain in the future. It's not an easy sell, so likely you're going to have to build an eminent domain process. So just help me understand. I don't want us to lose the plot here, because we are, you know, we came back, we heard your comments. We worked it out with Penn Pot to permit sidewalk throughout the entire right of way. We got as basically as far as we possibly could. And now we're basically there, and now you're asking us to go fifteen thousand dollars more for sixty feet of sidewalk to nowhere.
Uh, for for the benefit of the group, we do make sure the town right away is wide enough that we can construct sidewalks if we so choose. Just in case there was any confusion.
Even in developments that happen in the fifty to sixty. It is your right away to Perry Vista.
It says Perry Vista is a fifty foot.
Yeah, it's a fifty foot right away.
That's what all of our roads are, and we have sidewalks in there.
That's been a, even back before we were a charter community, that's a township standard, has been for quite some time.
The the cartwheel is only twenty four feet, so there's a lot of room on either side.
There's roughly twelve feet on each side of the pavement back of curb.
Are there any other comments about this?
Okay.
Good.
So.
If I'm hearing. So.
We're willing to build the sidewalk on Perry Vista.
We already did four hundred fifty feet, costs us a hundred grand, and three, so I must with our fifteen grand. I'm only a small developer. I'm not sheets. I was a little guy.
So we will try to make that work. So I guess what we are saying is we would like to revoke our first modification request. For the second one, thank you, RJ, the second one. And still ask for your approval tonight, with the condition that we go ahead and complete the sidewalk on Perry Vista.
Dan, did you have any engineering comments?
I I I really, I mean, Mike's done a good job cleaning up all the engineering comments. There's still a couple of things out there. I I think it's just the tightness of this site is is pretty evident. And the turning templates indicate that people maneuvering through the site are going to have to move through parking spaces to to maneuver around it. It's really tight. Okay, so that that's commented on and paperman in our office looked at that and said that actually some of the movements, I guess the trucks are going to have to back out.
Yeah, the first off, the garbage trucks, they would be accessing the site on non-peak hours. So, you know, they they wouldn't be, there wouldn't be cars in the parking spaces while that vehicle will be maneuvering the site. We're running the fire trucks and ambulances. They would come in and they would access, they would have access to the front of the site. Uh, because, I mean, they would just pull right in and do that. And even if there was an incident down on the on the southern parking lot. They can park along Mohican and access the site from down there if needed. The box truck for deliveries. Yeah, yeah, the box, box truck for deliveries, the loading zone we're planning to have is on the northern part of the site. I saw Mike's comments about, I guess it appeared by the building footprint, it was on the southern part of the site. Right. We can indicate, I can put an easy note on the plan that says loading zone up there. But that's at grade with basically the. It it's more conducive towards for deliveries, because there's stairs on the southern portion of the sidewalk down there.
So we'll be on the north.
We will be on the north, correct.
So by uploading, it has to come in and it will park on that side.
Yes.
This is small center, it's not high volume, not big loads of anything coming in.
Sure. That's that's surely my comments, Mr. Chairman, okay?
Anybody have anything else? Any public comments? Was there no public here?
Uh, I don't have anyone that has typed anything in the chat to sign up. Please do so now. If you were watching from home and wanted to make a public comment. Not getting anyone.
All right, the first motion is a motion to recommend Town Council approve the modification request number one to allow for buffer yards as presented on the submitted plans.
What was your question, Greg?
I thought they went through those.
Oh, number, number two, the buffer yard modification still needs to be there just because there's not enough to fit a buffer yard behind the building.
All right.
Yeah.
Applicant request modified buffer yards due to the historically non-conforming nature of the property and limited setback space. We have a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. The second one was revoked, which. Talked about a modification for a partial waiver on the sidewalk. The next motion is to recommend Town Council approve. The land development application for the McCambers Point mixed-use retail development. Have a motion to that effect?
I'll move to approve it.
Second?
A second.
Mr. Chair, before you vote, may I just interject? I I would feel more comfortable if you would make that contingent upon. Addressing the comments in my September twenty ninth letters. There's a number of administrative comments, and it's just a catch all.
Okay.
To make sure that.
We'll make that contingent on your letter. Yeah.
Yeah, my motion to approve is contingent on his letter.
I have a standard little phrase I use for all that, so.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, good. Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Now, we're going to go to the first.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. I can present it and then you can decide what you want to hear about that.
Next item on the agenda is item number one, McCambers Square Master Plan Amendment.
Okay, so this one, I haven't been able to get in contact with the applicant. Bit surprised, they're usually quite prompt and on time, so something, some wires must have gotten crossed. However, it's a pretty minor vision to discuss, so I am just going to quickly go over to you all. And then you can decide essentially what you'd like to do. Whether you'd rather wait to vote until they're here, or if you're comfortable with it. Um, so the last time we were here, the only real remaining question for this master plan update. Was some of the curb line setbacks in this area right here, this block of townhomes. Did not meet the ten foot minimum. You are allowed to use those quite reduced setbacks for multifamily. Townhome developments in the C five district as long as you do it in, you know, concert with an overall master plan. I, we received this plan late, late last week. And I did review it to make sure that the setbacks were all okay. They did update those to be compliant with the code.
Okay. Any comments? Go the other way this time, Dan?
No comment.
Greg?
No, no comments.
John?
No.
Mr. Daiswell?
Uh, it appears that they've done some provisions to lay out to to avoid. Some of them, the turns that were difficult within the within the layout, RJ. It is, did did our hard code official take a look at it, and they're okay with the sound layout?
Yep.
Did they, did they move that? This driveway closer to this building?
Oh. Interesting question. Let me pull up the last one. I just have to load it from the cloud. So. Right, yeah, I know, I have, I have my little clicker that I can circle things on the screen, but.
Nobody else.
No, yeah. There we go. This is what originally submitted. I'm just going to zoom this in and kind of flip between them real quickly so we can see.
I guess they were probably that close, weren't they?
Yeah, yeah, that was, that that looks like. Looks the same to me.
Yeah, okay. Interesting.
Yeah, they got, they got, I think these a little bit more than I was. Yeah, they got, they got, um, I think these a little bit more than I was. But that's not it.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Um, I think there was a question about visitor parking. Could we have that back up, please? And they, on the last plan, they had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight spaces. And now I think they've gone down to five.
Where, where are you looking?
Can we put the picture back up?
I'm just gonna flip. Oh, that's right. You can't see it because it's not screen share. Um. Let's see. I'm going to compare. This is the current plan. Let's.
Right. And can, you can see up in that triangle, um, hold your hand still, hold your little paw still.
Oh, gee, this is, yeah, these aren't showing up on.
They're, they're, and they added some above there in the little triangle place toward the right. It looks like they added four spaces. If you look on the new plan, which are not on this plan, yes, see right where your hand is. Yes. So those are added.
Yeah.
Uh, but the other ones are gone. So you had it, we had it, there's a net loss of parking.
Yeah, our, our code doesn't have a minimum requirement for the visitor parking. I believe, well, the, the, the requirements are a little different for the C five master plan thing in general. But I believe that you only have to provide two off-street spaces for the residential user. You're not required to account for, um, visitor parking with the townhomes.
Well, we can certainly say, hey, um, you had more parking here before and now you have less parking because we know how tight parking is already everywhere.
I'm, I'm looking at this spot right here. And if Jerry was here, I would ask him, are these two parking spots?
They might.
Parking spot shape.
They might be.
Yeah. So it looks like.
There's two additional, there's two additional between buildings. I can't read the, the numbers, but the ones, there's two little slight stacked ones, like almost like a.
These ones.
Saw too.
Yeah.
So that, that would put them at a total of two.
And then there's five here.
Seven.
What did they have before?
They had seven.
Two, three, four, five, six.
They had eight before.
They had eight. I'm, I'm not sure what's going on.
They could put them out there.
Here.
We'll find another one.
Yeah.
Uh, well, I mean, I'm just trying to keep up. I didn't know those two little notches were parking spaces. I just didn't know if they forgot to draw them in here. Because, you know, we, we had mentioned that before because it's, looks notably empty for, you know, all that they're doing.
Yeah, I, I will say now, this is kind of a, a throwback from a couple of months ago when the developer first started having conversations, you know, at the administrative level. Um, that I had encouraged some sort of courtyard placement here instead of just pavement. So, you know, that, that may be why those spots were kind of relocated. There may be one picked up somewhere else, you know, we, it's, all of this is still gonna come through a full land development site plan approval. Um, but, you know, they certainly are not on the drawing anymore. So that may be a courtyard now.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure it wasn't missed or anything. And what is the setback supposed to be from the property to the property line?
Uh, so when, when it's one of these master plan sites, you basically don't have to respect internal setbacks.
Not, not the internal setback, but from the, um, from the, uh, townhouses to the edge of the entire master plan.
Oh, you mean like over here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it fifty feet? I was thinking that between a residential and a, or maybe this isn't, count as a residential then, because in a commercial, because I thought that was a hundred feet.
It's a, it's, it's a hundred on the commercial, not the residential.
Right, right, yeah. Cause that's respective of on the commercial property.
Uh, if somebody developed the property to the left, that would be a hundred feet.
If it, yeah, if it was, if it was commercial, potentially. I mean, it, it depends. The C five district is a lot more flexible with this master plan stuff. So, um, like, for example, you don't have to worry about internal commercial setbacks. I know that's not exactly the question at hand, but point being.
Right, right.
You know, if it's, if, there are different stipulations for if one of these properties abuts a residential property versus any other type of multifamily or commercial.
Okay, all right. So the commercial has to be a hundred feet from the residential, but the residential does not have to be a hundred feet from the commercial.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
Just going back to the parking, we're eight, we used to have eight, now we've got seven if we're counting correctly, uh, visitor spots for lack of a better term. Is that for all of those townhomes?
Yes. Yeah.
So, and do we have any rule or ratio that we have, we would want them to meet? That eight, eight seems quite few. Seven is even fewer. So do we have any requirements or is that totally up to them?
Yeah, they're, per code, you don't have to cook visitor spots into the townhome developments. You just have to provide the off-street parking for the residents.
I think Kim's right. I think we should, uh, just mention it through them.
Yeah, but now this may not be, you know, too alleviating in the grand scope of the whole development, but they're supposed to. Be getting, as far as I know, they are getting reciprocal agreements for, you know, the other parking spaces, um, throughout this development. Now, I would assume that those would probably be occupied by the. Commercial customers. However, it, it is something that's been noted in the letters and that they have said, yeah, we're gonna, you know, we're.
It's, it's controversial where, whether they even have enough parking. And they're like, oh, we're gonna use these guys parking. And then these guys are like, oh, we're gonna use those guys parking and. You know, we.
Well, it could all be alleviated by fewer townhomes now.
Oh, Dan, Dan, what a concept.
Uh, so, you know, and we were, I know this has been discussed and presented by the developer many times of how much. Green space and open space they would, they're trying to provide. It seems like it's getting whittled away and whittled away and whittled away. Now. I know that they're trying to maximize their investment all well and good, but. Should we, should we have an oversight here that says, yeah, but? And the but might be, you know, the reality of the world is that there should be visitor parking. But if we don't have a code to enforce that, then maybe I'm whistling in the wind.
If, if I were to speculate. For somebody who isn't here, um, I would guess that, and I, I mean, I'll, like, I'll go after this right now. This spot here on the plan. I personally thought would be more attractive as a courtyard, um, or some sort of, you know, green space because it's kind of nestled in there. So. If the, if what's been done is, you know, essentially moving the spots up here, plus or minus one, I assume it was like a hammer to turn around and come another spot. Um, like that was, that was my suggestion to give this greater down here, um, although we didn't talk about total number of visitor spots in, in that conversation in general.
But to be clear, we have no requirement.
No.
For visitor spots.
We do not.
We should.
I think also what, what's unique or like in the issue is that the off-street parking is in the garage. There's no. Open driveway that they would put two cars there, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, that, well.
One.
Some.
I think I made some lines on the, on the, on the top left section.
Yeah. You can see the stuff, the, the line, let me zoom this up here, because it's a pretty tiny number. But for example, I would assume that this is the driveway section and it looks like they've got enough depth for a car in here, but not all of them are that long.
Kind of visitor parking are we concerned about?
Is what parties.
Yeah.
I mean. Grandma, grandma. Where, where's Grandma gonna walk?
How many townhomes are there? I forget.
Fifty eight.
All right, fifty eight. I, I have to believe somebody among those fifty eight is gonna have somebody over to their house.
I, I just, I, I'm looking in terms of the other types though. And there's a lot of, of parking. Spread around. And if, if one of the buildings is a commercial, and I think it was, wasn't it gonna be kind of a restaurant or something for the bus stop? And then the other one was a daycare. Like the daycare is not gonna be used in party time. And the daycare is not gonna be used on the weekend.
One would presume.
Presumably. Uh, unless you drive a kid to the daycare to go park.
Yeah.
Um, so like you would see in the spots up there, in, in that there might, there might not be the overlap between usage of all the spots. And the prime time to visitor type hours. And my fear is if we load something up with so much parking, that it, it loses its character and just becomes a. Too much of a focus on, on parking where it seems like a relatively dense residential style development and people want to have guests. And I can't imagine that there'd be that big of a party. Or that the town would want to have people having that big of a party that they can't find some spot and hook it up. Well, I think, isn't one of the other uses a brewery, a brewery?
Well, I mean, potentially, it's, from what I understand, it's not under agreement, but the food hall, food pub thing is the intention over here.
The other analogy is what about the, the, the townhouses that McCannas crossing? Do they experience any parking issues? I mean, that's a much further parking field after granted. There's a lot of retail there. But those townhouses, it seemed to have been okay and they don't have any, any visitor spaces. I think this deserves some because it's not as dense as you have it. I agree with Brendan. You know, sometimes it can, I, I see some, some people refining them more and more. And then, you know, we're trying to create less impervious paving. So, you know, every, every bit of paving that we put in creates stormwater.
Right.
It has a ripple effect.
And I think they're coming at this from a transit oriented development approach, you know, for whatever that's worth. Um, not that that necessarily, you know. Means that the visitors are going to be doing a transit oriented activity.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go and park right in personal care.
Right.
That's where I'll be on it.
Right. So, you know, I mean, and I think that is the assumption is that the, the parking spot should be free flowing across the site, but. Whether somebody newly wants to walk that far, I guess that's a choice they'd have to make.
Anything else?
Only families with no friends can, uh, be down there. Okay.
Yeah.
Friends, no benefits.
No, no friends, no family. That may be a big advantage. I'm sorry, mom, you can't come over. We got no parking.
Um, I, there is only one member of the public that is not part of the town organization on the call. So. If you would like to make a public comment, please type in the chat. There is no one in the room. They have logged off.
Okay.
So now there's no one.
No one. All right. And we have then a motion to recommend Town Council approve the amendments to the McCannas Square Master Plan. To incorporate townhomes into a future development plan. The all yellow one. Okay, Brendan has moved. Is there a second?
No second.
Greg has seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Post by, okay, okay. Okay, next thing is approval of September seventh minutes. Got a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, general public comment. What is that?
We don't have anyone here.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Moves with adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, we're done.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen.